Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session for the site review regulations for October 25th. If we could, before we begin that, could we, could I have a motion to take items one, the work session, and two, the public hearings out of order?
Can I move?
Second it? All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. The work session for Bothwick Forest and the public hearing for Bothwick Forest, I won't read them in, ought to be postponed to a time uncertain. So if I could have a motion to postpone to a time uncertain?
Go move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing? The chair votes aye. We will now go back to the work session for the site review regulations that we met on some...
October 4th?
October 4th.
Something like that, yeah.
I believe we got halfway through the review of the site review regulations. And with that, David, I'll turn it over to you.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Rick Tinter.
And I will turn it over to you.
With that, we're done for the night.
I think we're up to page 31, right? Okay. Should we just, just continue going page by page as where we were before?
I think, I think we should. I think it worked out well last time. And then at the end, if we could maybe finish this at like 7:15, say 15 minutes to go back if there's any questions from the previous meeting.
Yeah, I had some issues here and, and I think as I went along, I realized they may have been addressed later, but I guess, I just wanted to sort of throw them out there and be sure that that was the case. Under the purpose section in section 6.1.
What page you on?
Page 31. Just wanting to try to emphasize again sustainability in there. And something about either, you know, native plants or non-invasive species or something along those lines. And the third piece was discouraging, or maybe there's a more positive way we can say this, but discouraging fertilizers or other chemicals.
Counselor Dwyer.
I know there's a whole other article about it and I, I think in this, I have the same thing that Paige just said. I made a lot of notes early that maybe I found later on, but it does seem to me we ought to say something in landscaping about one of the purposes is related to stormwater. And one of the purposes is related to water quality because that is so connected, or at least reference the section on water quality.
I just had one comment, Rick, only because I saw in some APA thing recently, the rain garden thing. And, and I, you know, we certainly don't want a requirement for rain gardens or anything, but I wondered if there was some way, you know, because we're going to add diagrams to this and stuff, if we just knew what a rain garden was and, you know, some...
Can you guys talk about that?
Do we have, I'm just wondering whether we have a low, a low impact development section here?
I thought we, what we ended up doing was incorporating low impact development into, throughout the...
We have the stormwater management section here and some of it may be in there. So rain guards, we should talk about that. We have, we, it may, we'll get, we'll look at it a little bit later, but we'll try to talk about that, yep.
Counselor Dwyer.
And then this, these may be issues you want to kick to some other place, but is there any, should we have anything connected to the conserva, referencing the Conservation Commission or the Historic District Commission in any of these articles? Conservation Commission obviously relevant to this one.
That'd be a little difficult because those are zoning ordinance requirements. So you're really looking at this from a site plan initiative. You can probably coordinate a little bit.
What's, what's your goal? What are you trying to accomplish? Maybe that's how we get to this.
Well, when I think, and it's not this one, but it's the one about buffers and wetland. And it seems to me, you know, well, it's, it's always in the spirit of education in the sense of people reading our Water Resources Standards article. It doesn't even mention that we have a Conservation Commission there. And I know it's not in our site review that that would come up first, but it, and there's a place later on where, oh, something about the lighting features, if something was in the Historic District that, you know, it might require attention to that. But we don't really connect anywhere in these to our other commissions. And so it's really in the spirit of a question of how we...
Well, the way, the way these things normally work is if it has a relevance to a committee or a commission, they get their input into it. But at this point, you're in the actual development of the site, so your authority is somewhat specific. You can probably, like Cindy's suggesting, get there to some degree. But if you're going to incorporate other agencies in your review, that actually gets rather difficult and you'll actually prolong the process.
But I mean, just think about, but, but we do take their advice.
And we do it under your authority.
Yeah, we do it under specific items like conditional use permit for wetlands, but we don't take the advice of the Conservation Commission at site plan review. Now, I, my concern about any, it might confuse, because it's already a little confused sometimes. Anyway, people forget full about what their purview is as board members. So unless they have some regulatory responsibility, I, I, on, under site review, I'd be careful about it, only because we're sitting in court trying to defend.
Wouldn't that almost send us backwards in a sense that conservation should have already been completed when it comes to us?
I think it would be all right if the board had a question though to direct it, but it's not making it a requirement.
Yeah, I'm not, oh, I'm not saying, but I'm really just talking about...
Because under...
Because procedurally, it too...
I'm talking, I'm talking about how this fits within the larger context. I'm not saying, you know, like make a section on it, but that, it just dawned on me as I got into the middle of this, that none of it references these other things that perhaps had happened. And it, it, it feels like procedurally, if I was picking this up and only looking at this...
Would actually be pretty comprehensive.
You know what I, I think Chris is getting at though, it's like we need a separate two page thing that explains how all these commissions and these work together.
Exactly.
That's what you're looking for. I think it's a great idea, but I don't think it's part of site review. But we could lose doing that, wouldn't be that hard.
Could be a useless guide.
Yeah.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
Education has not, has never been within the purview of the HTC, right?
Thankfully, no.
Right.
Unless they're historically accurate plants.
But the lighting comes up later on.
Mr. Coker.
Just sort of a very broad question and, and sort of keeping in mind the unintended consequences of things when we say things like, "Street trees shall be planted at a minimum rate of one tree per 30 lineal feet, minimum." Why do we put ourselves in a box that says, it may be more beneficial at places to do it than, you know, one in 15 or one in 20 where our regulations are saying this, where do we have some flexibility for site-specific issues that may make, for instance, corner visibility shall be maintained to provide an unobstructed view along the intersecting street for a minimum of 20 feet while maybe they only have 15 or 10 or, or something? And, and David, I would turn to you and say, is this...
I was afraid of that.
Is this the kind of stuff that can go to the Board of Adjustment for a variance?
No.
Okay, so then we're stuck with this.
No, because you...
Sorry, you can always waive that.
We have a provision here that you can waive any of your standards here. The planning board can waive.
Where is that?
It's on section two, we just, yeah, I think it's the end of section two, I believe.
Yep, this under 16.
Yeah, page 16.
Page 16?
Yep.
Waiver request. A waiver, something, something, something.
Okay.
That's fair, as long as we have the ability to do that.
And, and we've had comments related to that where maybe it's not necessarily to be as specific in certain cases. And in those cases, we've tried to instead do some kind of performance standard. So you're saying, what is our goal here? Does it have to be specific feet? No. We have to, you have to maintain visibility and stuff like that.
As long as we can waive the standards.
So we, we've tried to balance with the specifics with also some kind of performance standards.
Okay, good, thank you.
I was just going to suggest on page 32, Rick, we were playing with this earlier, all non-residential multifamily developments. To add development after non-residential.
We're saying, actually, it was, it was saying all non-residential developments and multifamily developments.
Oh, sorry.
Correct? Yeah.
Six point three, number five. It probably goes without saying, but it says, you know, that we would remove existing non-native and it does, I don't think it says anywhere that we would, we would not allow invasive.
For new planting?
For new planting. And someone came to us on one thing with the uoneumus or something like that, that, and so just to some, whether it belongs here or not, that we also do not allow invasive as defined by, because that seems the...
I can double check that. I think it is in here, but I will double check it.
I think it is in here somewhere.
So, so the, the wish is not to allow any new planting invasive species.
Right.
I mean, do, okay, do you want it to be invasive, non-native, or you're saying they're both the same?
Why do we need non-native in that sentence?
Yeah, are they the same thing, do you think?
Not necessarily. I mean, it depends on who has them.
There are lots of non, yeah, lots of non-native things.
Invasive can also, invasive certainly means probably non-native, but it can also mean it's the, it's a very aggressive type of plant.
So native invasive species would be left, correct?
Perhaps.
So if we took, well, I'm saying if we took the word non-native out, you just said existing invasive plant species shall be removed.
That way it's covered.
Right.
And I'll make sure we have a requirement that it's not, no new planting.
Purple.
Blue.
Purple loosh drive.
Do we need to identify though where the list is? Lucy's informing that it could be a variety of plants that could go either way.
We could refer to the state's requirements.
The state has a pit list.
Do we want to put that at the end?
Yep.
And invasive plant species as defined by...
As defined by.
That would help.
Blah, blah, blah.
There goes Jim LaBrie's palm tree.
He's in rye.
Lucky.
Assuming these are general guidelines, so if somebody could go further if they needed to in a review, but to give the board an opportunity, one of the things that TAC often does is it says you should protect vegetation by putting up snow fence to avoid compacting. Do we feel like we've got those type of measures covered and we can assume that responsibility?
Can we add that to the staff level?
I feel like we do have that somewhere. I'm trying to find.
Six, six, one, landscaping shall be maintained.
Well, are we done, are we done with 32?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're done with 32, we'll move on to 33?
I went way ahead, sorry.
That's okay.
Way did we get there?
Page 33? Page 34? Page 35?
Comment at the very bottom of page 35, item number six. Is that like a complete sentence?
Where applicable, comma.
Oh, where applicable.
I'm sorry.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it didn't read like what?
Counselor Dwyer.
All right, you mentioned that's me on 34, a little I at the bottom. It, it, the stem there seems odd for what follows. So it says that front yard landscaping may contain any of the following, and then it tells you what you can't do.
Oh, good point.
And I wondered if there was something actually missing there and that there should have been another standing there.
Probably as public utility easements and open service drainage, not to occupy more than 30 percent. You know, that kind of thing is, you're allowing it.
Oh, just written in a different way, okay.
Yeah, so we'll double check the wording.
On that same page, you have two Fs and two Is.
Right.
Is that, okay. Is that all you had, Chris, on 34?
Well, I wondered about each actually because later on, we talk about how, you know, massing isn't the only way to have, later on when we talk about the different ways to, remember that talk we had about, you know, placing trees in different ways, diagonal and serpentine and all that, that massing might not be the only way for a particular design that we may anticipate would be the optimal design, so maybe not.
Maybe we don't need to require that.
Maybe we don't need to require it. Maybe we have it taken care of later.
Ms. Hayden.
Just related to that, I'm just kind of wondering now that I see it, what do we mean by maximum effect?
Right.
It could have various effects.
Look big.
Yeah.
Don't ask Dawn that question.
I don't know, I don't know if we want to kill off age or do we want to make it better?
Clearer.
Then we could clarify it and perhaps put it some kind of definition of what we mean.
And maybe it's not masked, but it's placed. Plant materials shall be placed to, you know, like achieve the goals specified in this section of the ordinance, which, you know, where, you know, might be shading, it might be...
Screening.
Might be screening, you know, could be any number of things, could be just aesthetics.
I too, at the bottom, you know, when I first saw this, it didn't register with me until we were out on a site looking at mechanical installations. They can actually be quite massive too. So I'm not so sure where we're going with this unless we define the mechanical installation a little bit better or perhaps recognize that it could have considerable amount of height.
That was an unusual one.
Yeah.
But it was very...
That's the point, of course.
What?
That's the point of course.
Yeah, yeah. And, and it really does bring up a point, Rick and I were talking about this earlier today, that the mechanical equipment, HVAC condenses specifically, can be strewn about the yards and it's, it may not happen until well after site plan approval because there's certainly no building mechanical design at the time they come here. So it's certainly an issue.
I can't remember if we...
Well, maybe the issue is, is that under our purview for site review? Can we look at that stuff? I mean, maybe we need to force the issue sooner.
I think we should.
Right.
And in part, we do because we're doing more now to require them to say how they're going to hook up to public service and that, and maybe we need to, that's somewhere in the ordinance, maybe we need to also add to that and show us on your site plan where your mechanicals are going to be and how the, how you're proposing to screen them.
And, and another very common install now are, are generators. It's more and more common. It's, it's not a luxurious frill anymore.
No.
Almost unnecessary.
Would that be appropriate in the utility standards section?
Possibly, yeah.
And I was thinking, if we put proposed condenser location and put a note, should condenser location vary from proposal location as shown, blah, blah, blah to coordinate with, I'm assuming the building department?
Well, it, it's a site.
Well, actually, would that be minus site?
Normally, we assume they're on the roof unless otherwise depicted, but sometimes you get yourself in trouble with that.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of them go on the ground.
Yeah. A lot of them, yeah. And if it's a tight situation, it doesn't work as easily.
So should we add to 2.6?
And the Historic District Commission does oftentimes review that stuff, you know, which is a good thing. I mean, trying to create some of those screens on the roof and, so it would make sense.
That'd be a good note to put on it, Ms. Hayden.
And I, I wonder too if here we're saying we have to screen these mechanical vegetation, there might be cases where we'd want it screened with something else that might look better. I mean, think of the ones the public service is doing downtown. If those were screened, there's no room, they'd look weird, you know, the, whatever they call those things, that they're doing like down at Crave Mall, those wouldn't be good vegetated, they're better, you know, fenced in.
Fenced in.
They are what they are.
Yeah, they are what they are, so...
On a red brick wall.
Because then they become a maintenance issue. So I think we need to think about, you know, that's kind of the old school of saying, oh, yeah, vegetate, it's landscaped, but in that case, those might not look better.
Yeah, and we can, we can revisit, we also have requirements for screening in the waste storage and onsite waste storage, like, you know, dumpsters and things like that, some kind of...
Consolidate maybe.
Have similar, and have similar requirements.
Yes.
Because they're kind of same kind of issue.
Issue.
Mr. Coker.
Just a, again, a broader question, of all of these standards and everything else, for the sake of discussion, they, they say one thing and do another. What is the mechanism to, to force compliance or probably put it differently to, to urge compliance?
We have a bond and ultimately we could sue.
Force is still a good word.
Okay.
We have an ability to impose maximum effect.
And, and a bond is a very good tool because really the only thing that gets anyone's attention is money.
Yeah. So at the very end, when the final inspection's being done, somebody signs off and, and if, if it's not right, the money that's put up in the bond will rectify...
Correct.
Okay, good.
But the reality too is, you know, all, everything in here is based on a reasonable person looking at it and deciding they're going to comply with it and put it on a site plan. You know, the edges are always going to be rough, but that's the purpose of the bond is to try to make sure that we have it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Is, is there a place where the bond requirement would be referenced in the setting of the bonds? Does that, does that belong...
In the site review agreement.
But does that belong somewhere in this document, a reference to that?
This regulation empowers the preparation of that document and that's sort of a separate model that goes through the city attorney's office. So they are connected.
But again, in the spirit of kind of education, I think that would be another one of those things that would be helpful to kind of see where is this fitting within and what else do I need to pay attention to?
For example, Lucy could explain in the bond how it's tailored to allow the vegetation to go a little longer.
Yeah, it gives it about six extra months or growing season to allow replacement of landscape material that may die.
Any other questions on 34? Ms. Roff.
I'm sorry, I had a thought about, this purpose thing must be on my mind on page And I don't know what anyone else thinks about it, but I guess I was thinking about screening vis-à-vis, I guess actually just bringing up this issue of this huge tree, this fir tree that I have in my yard and my neighbor says, oh, it's my natural air conditioning. I don't know if it would be, you know, sort of a refinement of sustainability as a concept to think about landscaping as, yeah, some sort of conserve, functional conservation method.
Interesting.
It's very interesting.
I don't know, just throwing it out there.
That's...
And it's sort of, that sort of ties in a little bit to green building standards. So we might be able to reference that a little bit. That ties into rain gardens and stuff like that.
Okay.
We can try to figure out how to incorporate that appropriately.
Of course, solar heating's the other side of that.
Right.
We just, you know, when you take down some of those big trees.
Exactly.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
Interesting. Are you all set on 31?
Thank you.
No, no problem. No. 34, we all set? Let's go to 35. Counselor Dwyer.
A little thing and a bigger thing, 6.51A, I just, I think there's probably a better way to say it. It implies that you have to have a mixture of deciduous and evergreen. And I think the concept is the mix of species. You don't always have to have deciduous and evergreen, right?
Yes.
Just to clarify that.
I think there was, and maybe Lucy might want to provide some guidance on this, but there was concern about having it be seasonal versus year-round kind of cover. So I think that was why evergreen might have been included there, but I agree with your point. It could also just be a mix of species. So I don't know what the concern from the planning board is in this.
I mean, I could see that if that was about screening, but...
But it doesn't matter so much where those trees go.
And then the other point is, and this might, is probably a much bigger conversation, this applies to, this accepts waterfront business, central business A and central business B, particularly with the changes that we made in the northern tier. I wonder if there is something, some section that at some point would talk about what we would run for landscaping in at least that district, not waterfront business.
Being central business.
Right.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, there's no guidance, right? We don't have any authority there.
Well, we have authority, but you're, you're right. We need to show that we're looking for it too.
Right.
What we often have in that is the development is to the lot line, so we're working with them actually to improve the right of way. But I think your point's well taken.
You have two Bs there.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Hayden.
Before we leave that point, how do you guys think to incorporate, do we add a separate section that addresses CBA, CBB?
Perhaps, yeah.
I mean, most of those are built up, but it is, it's the northern tier.
Right.
It's the tier one, where we don't want to miss opportunities for some cool shade trees.
Under 6.51B, I think probably we could write this just a little bit different in the sense that it says the trees, a minimum of six feet high, so it's not to impede. Obviously, the trees are going to grow.
Right.
And the other thing is, if it does, if it isn't going to impede vehicle, vehicular or pedestrian sightlines, then perhaps we do want them to be slightly larger or at least be able to allow for that. And I'm not quite sure how we would get there.
Maybe wrong about this, but I think we meant to plant them at a minimum of six feet high, but that might be, I don't know if that's possible.
You don't want the canopy lower.
Lower than six feet.
That's what it is.
Okay.
It's a clearance, actually, it's more than the canopy, it's a clearance.
You know, that's not, it's not quite the right lingo.
Yeah, no.
I've seen lingo that you clearly get it, that what they mean is you don't want to get out of your car and have your eye poked out.
Right.
How is it, how is it in the little code, Rick?
Do we want to take minimum six feet out and just put, with canopies?
There's, there's some lingo that I've seen.
So it's not to impede vehicular?
But there's lingo.
The signs are, canopies hanging out all the way.
The other one too is, may have an area where you don't mind the tree grown.
I thought there was something in the building code too.
The mature tree.
Okay.
And I don't think probably we're precluded from that, but it'd be nice to know you could do it. Sort of like we have all these trees and when they reach a certain height, they got to be yanked and something else put in, start over.
Well, this isn't tying about the height of a tree.
No.
It's tying about the branching structure can't start below six feet.
So the...
Hence the need for clarity.
Because they're, the body's just pedestrian sidewalks, you know, parked cars, you want your canopy up here, not down here.
And perhaps it's not a big...
We make it seven feet for us in our 6.2 and 6.3.
Six foot eight.
And it's for line of sight too, so you can see without having branches in the way.
How do we want to leave that? Do we want to look for stronger language?
Yeah, we can modify that. You would have lower branching trees. So it should just say, you know, the trees that have a lower branching structure, somehow they should be taken into consideration. If you're going to have evergreens, canopies go all the way to the ground.
Yep.
They're going to be a certain spot, if you have eye pokers, they can't be next to the pedestrian line.
Right, but you don't want to preclude them from areas that wouldn't...
That's right.
Yeah.
I think they get it.
So we need to, yeah, we need to add maybe a few bullets there. We can improve that.
Any other questions on page 35? Move to page 36? Page 37?
On page 36 on the screening, looking more to Lucy, I assume we've gotten rid of the problem with the hollow wood fence, six and eight feet, we're all on one side now.
At six, yeah.
Everywhere.
Okay. You still have a second question? Ms. Gaff.
Thank you, I just have a question, how are these going to be enforced? Dave?
We have a bond, and we have a final inspection that would go out, and also, a lot of this is assuming that everyone with good intentions is trying to do their plan right, but we do have a bond to ensure the completion of the project as proposed.
Okay.
Thanks. Can I just follow up on that, answering Chris's question, I was looking for the section that had it, on page ten, it talks about the site review agreement and the surety, so it's right up front.
Okay.
On the very last page, it says how that security gets released. Right, slide fifty-eight, or fifty-seven.
And we don't want to tell you how to get it back until you do all the stuff that's in the middle.
Mr. Coker.
That's what an index is for.
Again, in the spirit of enforcement, after the fact, signed off and inspection and all this, you have things like irrigation, I mean, I remember the other day, I drove, I was going down Route One, it was pouring rain, and the sprinklers were on, and, I mean, clearly, I don't, that may not even be in our purview, but it's something that just-
Actually, it's coming.
Section right there.
Six-eight. But right, my question is, what happens after the fact in enforcement for something like that, where, you know, the inspection's been done, everybody's signed off, the bond's been put away, and-
Well, they're required to keep-
Day-to-day operating.
Yeah, they're required to keep their stuff in mechanically operating condition, this or the other, but no one's going to go, we're not-
It's not perfect.
Yeah. Well, I understand that, but my question still stands, I mean, what do we have for enforcement capabilities?
Neighbors.
Neighbors, yeah, like the sausage guy at Home Depot.
Well, does this, this last sentence, which requires that they be operated in accordance with the city's water ordinance, does it then become a police power enforcement issue rather than a zoning issue?
It's going to cost them, too, because of the tier thing, you know, I mean, that helps a little.
As a matter of fact, this is all designed to save them money in the long run, technically.
Counselor Dwyer.
Well, along that line, I think this is where the point of natives should come up, because it's not drought tolerant like cactuses, this is if you do natives, you will reduce your need for irrigation, so that's where I think the language should-
Drought tolerant native species?
No, no, I mean, if you do native plantings-
It will be drought-
It will be drought tolerant. I mean, it will work, you know, you won't have to put in your extra irrigation system.
What about if you, if you put some wetland species in an area where it doesn't, you know what I mean? Wetland species are native, are you going to-
That's a good point. Oh, put them in the wrong area, you need, I see what you're saying.
I mean, we've got human error here that we could throw into it.
You hope that people know not to do that.
Drought tolerant native species, would that, is that too much of a, Mr. Rice, and then Ms. Hayden.
You know, maybe one thing that would be helpful, because, you know, we really have to ask me about snow storage and motorcycle racks and that, but I've never heard any of us say, is this site irrigated? And maybe we need something that would help prompt us at the planning board level to say, is it irrigated? If it is, tell us, you know, why.
The Water Division's pretty good at that, but that's true.
They never comes up at the planning board, and they're not as likely to say-
No.
Would that be a plan requirement that, you know, a checklist, you know, is it or is it not irrigated?
I think that's good.
Put a note, put a note.
What do you guys think the easiest way is to-
Put a note, require a note on the drawings.
All I'm saying is Tom Cravens asks that every time, every project.
But does it go anywhere?
Yes. This is actually where that language came from, the smart technology wants monitors, meters that go on when it's reached a certain amount of water, if they're going to have irrigation, it has to have that.
You should have a note on the site plan.
That doesn't mean the board shouldn't have a checklist, I'm just saying that we are covering that current.
It's being caught up in the pack.
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate in this irrigation that a note on the site plan be added to indicate whether irrigation is planned or not, or something like that?
We can require, and we can require, we can list it in the plan requirements, too.
And if, just to jump totally out, could we, could we put on plan requirements that the hours of construction be noted on-site plans? I know we looked at, talked about that, and it's great you can have them in a reg, but if you've got a set of drawings during the field-
Perhaps put Rick's home number on it.
Tinker.
Actually, put Don Coker's number on there.
Give him my number, I'll be glad to talk to him.
I think Mr. Rice had a question or comment.
Yeah, back on screening, we talk about in-
What page?
Thirty-six on C, six point seven, C five, we talk about deciduous trees as the kinds of trees that we use for screening, and you've probably had this discussion before, and so on, maybe this is just something that you need to educate me on here, but I'm wondering why you wouldn't allow evergreens like spruce, for example, to be involved with screening, because it can be very dense, and if you're supposed to screen, if you're trying to screen something, you're often going to do a lot better job than a deciduous tree, which in twenty years grows up and you have a large stem, and you can see right through everything, and all your, all your screening are the second, third, and fourth floors of something from the second, third, and fourth floors of something, but as spruce trees grow, they get, they're outstanding screens, I know from experience, planted about forty of them around my house, so.
Well, four above does have an evergreen hedge.
No, but we, the point is, it's a hedge, not a tree.
Right.
And so if we allowed it, yeah.
Yeah, just wondering.
And that gets, that brings us back to items I and II there, in terms of the solid wood fence and masonry walls, do we want to have those by themselves, or do we want to have them with something in front of them?
Like landscaping?
Like landscaping in front of them, yeah, is that, was that the question that was brought up earlier?
Yeah.
Sometimes the only space you can put one, you know, I think it gives a menu of things you can choose from, and these are minimum, and you could always require more.
Right.
It's a good idea to add-
Yeah, to five, sure.
I don't think there's any reason it's not, I think it was an oversight, so that's a great point.
This is actually the existing language in the zoning ordinance.
Counselor Dwyer.
This goes back to this conversation we just talked about irrigation and natives, I know what you said, and I agree with it, that it makes more sense to have put the low-impact features in, you know, throughout, but, and maybe it's not for you, maybe it's a great project for some graduate student, if we really are doing a sustainability city, I think it would be great to gather the low-impact features also in one place, so one could keep track of as an eco municipality, one could keep track of what are the low-impact features that we have built into our stuff, or annotate them in some way, you know, green type or something like that.
Yeah, so rather than have a separate section on low impact, somehow try to highlight them as well while we're in training.
Yeah, do it as, or something the Sustainability Committee could do, just so that we are bringing that to the fore.
Yes.
Do you mean on individual site plans coming before?
Oh, no, 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 I mean on, I mean on, it goes back to, I sent a question that Paige said before, that I could pick up and say, well, have we made progress in bringing low-impact concepts into our site review plans?
You know, just to follow up on that, I agree that that would be a good thing for the Sustainability Committee or some grad students to do, but I wonder if there's more we could do on here for them, we're going to have site plans with lots of checklists, but if they could note on the site plan any green technologies they're following, you know, because there are, you know, we might have a LEED, a building that's trying to get LEED certified, like a new mellow building.
You know, we, you can actually, they actually now have the neighborhood LEED stuff, and, which is, which is a rating system, so you could actually provide that as a checklist, and say, how many of these, you know, see where you stand in terms of, it's called LEED-nR, I think, isn't it? Or INDY, Neighborhood Development.
And I'm just saying, and not as a kind of hammer thing by the government, but as a way for applicants to think about, oh, well, these windows, they, yeah, no irrigation, that's, yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Would you want to include incentives for that, or is it, this is just-
Not right here, just checklist.
In good human behavior.
Having it will be incentive.
And do it as a checklist more of a requirement, right? Okay, yeah. Ms. Gaff.
Also, do you want to look at, remember we had positive criteria, which are the, like, C, D, and E on page twelve, and maybe add something that would be, you know, sustainability, that, you know, we're looking for sustainable, I tried to think about this, like, a site development plan would be sustainable, and I'm thinking about the Meadow Brook Inn, we have excess traffic usage over time, that's not sustainable given, you know, or maybe it is, but maybe we should add a sustainability site review criteria.
Hmm. So add that to that section two point four?
That the site plan provides for sustainable development on the site, or something like that, it's a little nebulous.
I think that's going to be hard to enforce, but we have, we are going to, maybe ten years from now, we might be there, but I think that's good, if I were sitting here evaluating saying, how am I going to evaluate on that criteria, it's either a LEED building or it's not, but I think that's a tough thing, I think the checklist is a good one.
Maybe that's it, I mean, but I called David and actually left a message, because I didn't know how to crack at this one, but I was thinking about the initiatives, and that there must be some way to encourage sustainable development in the site review plan process, site plan review.
We did, before you came in, I think we added it to the intent things up front.
Ah.
And I think, just making people aware that, geez, you're telling me if I get, if I add this or do this, that that'll be, you know, people may add things just by seeing that checklist, but not even knowing that it existed.
Right, yeah.
Rather than requiring, it'd be nice to just show them X amount of items, I think that's a great way to do it. So. Any other questions on thirty-six? Thirty-seven on irrigation. Thirty-eight, water resource, resources standards, David?
Yeah, on one A, I think we've got the good intent, I'm just wondering if somewhere we've defined what a buffer strip would be, if there's a width, a length, or something there, because we've seen them where they propose them like six inches, and I don't know if that's what we were looking for.
Ready?
Got another one, if you want me to keep going.
Keep going.
Okay, on D, I'm wondering if we could just delete that are fed by groundwater, so that we're indicating that we're protecting them rather than limiting it.
Surface waters are protected from contamination?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on E, well, meets all applicable federal, state, and city regulations, do we want to mention, since we're doing regulations, then shouldn't we also say statutes, ordinances?
Yeah.
Are regulations the same as standards?
Um, I don't know.
Often you see regulations and standards.
I think probably should have them in.
Lawyer on that stuff, she don't know.
We should add it.
They're not the same, then we should say standards as well.
Creative advice, I love it.
Any other questions on thirty-eight? No. Thirty-nine?
Seven, I'm sorry, Coker.
Seven-two dot oh one two A, an undisturbed buffer shall be retained around all wetlands and surface waters as required. That seems to go in the face of our wetlands regulations for encroaching on the buffer, so this, I read that to say an undisturbed buffer, okay, I'll bite, how big? Ten feet, a hundred feet?
Well, contained in the zoning law.
We refer you to Articles, well, what was Article Six, referring to the wetlands regs, where buffers defined.
And where we also allow some disturbance.
Right.
You have to go to the other regulation to answer that question.
Okay, all right.
But perhaps rather, to follow up, though, with Don, perhaps calling an undisturbed buffer, when you go to Article Six, it allows for disturbance, perhaps we should just be indicating that the buffer is regulated under Article Six.
Okay. So just a follow-up.
Yeah, take it down.
So that would get, that would go to the conditional use permit and all of that process?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on, Ms. Roberts, oh, hold on, Ms. Roberts.
Yeah, under the section seven point two, stormwater management in general, and I think this was maybe addressed later, but I wanted to be sure that we were somehow encouraging pervious surfaces to minimize stormwater runoff in the first place, so I don't know if we need to put that in there as well, but you feel like it just sort of emphasizes it, to put it at the beginning of the little section there?
I thought we had that somewhere.
It's later, it's actually back here, if you go to seven point seven, there's something called impervious surfaces. There you go. You have to minimize the area of impervious surfaces.
Did you have a question?
I do.
But we can add it up front, if you think we can.
Still on page thirty-nine, seven point two point zero one, C, oh, it's two, C, what do you mean by floodplains? Or what is meant by floodplains?
The floodplain is defined by the floodplain district, right? Doesn't FEMA have a hundred-year floodplain?
Well, and I just was wondering if this contradicts, I mean, that's not a prohibition on constructing in that zone, you've got to construct a certain way if you want to be in that zone, there's certain elevations, but it doesn't say you can't do it.
Yeah, correct.
Is that, is this a conflict?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah, because it says you can't do any of those things, which is not-
We should take that-
I just didn't want to make, if floodplain here meant something different-
That should come out, that should come out.
Or should it be referencing it?
Or should we just reference the floodplain section?
Well, you could do that, right? Right.
Well, then how, how-
I mean, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be a prohibitive, it should be the following standards, and then you, that's one of the standards.
Yep. As applicable as standards for floodplain development set forth in-
Yeah.
What'd she say? So Ms. Hayden.
Tom, seven point two, I don't know, it should say in additions, not in additions, but back to that issue we were discussing three minutes ago about stormwater management and impervious surfaces, just trying to make sure I understand the connection, seven point two one, that's really about anything that's taken off from the site, you got to treat it, collectively treat it, dispose of it. So I guess we don't have to get into talking about, anything about impervious there, because in impervious, that's where we talk about, the more impervious, the better, the less the leaves the site, the better.
Right.
Am I right in thinking that?
I think, I think that the, yeah, and I think that we were just talking about taking that first part of impervious and moving it to the front of Article Seven, and maybe adding a little bit more purpose to that, you know, having a, have a broader purpose statement at the beginning of Article Seven, that includes maximizing impervious, maximizing pervious surface and protecting off, you know, maybe, yeah, so it's quantity and quality, basically, a purpose section dealing with quantity and quality. Counselor Dwyer.
Seven point two oh one two A, I know we don't have it yet, but just to mark that that would also include the Vernal Pools buffer when it gets worked out by ordinance, that would be the place for it, so just to be sure we don't skip it.
Mm-hmm. So, Ms. Roberts.
The section a little bit right below that B, I didn't know if we should add the word native in there, when we talk about all stormwater treatment areas shall be planted with grasses, shrubs, I don't know if that's appropriate.
Got your native in there?
Yeah.
But do-
That's what I'm not-
If there's a non-native species that's wetland tolerant-
That's what I'm wondering, maybe it's not.
That you want to use, I think invasive is the word you want to, not-
Non-invasive appropriate.
Right, you can, you can have non-native, but you don't want invasive.
Right, okay, so you're right, non-invasive.
Because I know there's a whole bunch of wetland tolerant species that they're integrating now, and-
Yeah.
So I think if we said, non-invasive.
Yep.
So, David, you've been patient.
Not really, but under that same section, D, salt storage areas shall be covered, does that mean with a tarp or by a building?
What is your preference?
He supply one over the top.
Yeah, good.
Is the performance standard that they'll be covered so that there'll be no runoff of salt from the salt pile, is that too stringent?
I don't know, if they put a building up, then they're under all sorts of stuff, but if they put a tarp up, is it going to be efficient?
Yeah, but what are we trying to achieve?
We had that, we had that happen in an application for a large apartment complex, as I was, yeah, the Cedars, they did that, they had a salt pile, and we actually had a building with, and we discussed the runoff and all that, so that's within our purview And we actually had a building with, and we discussed the runoff and all that, so that's within our purview already, I think.
Yeah, but we want to give guidance.
Isn't the guidance so that no salt runs off the site from the salt pile something?
I would leave covered, just the way it is, and, and just add what Cindy said, so that no shal- salts shall leave. I mean, typically, New England is gonna be there for what, three months, and then it's gone? Why have, require somebody to build something when it's only-
Should we, should we remove the words whenever possible?
Yes.
Shall be covered to prevent, what did you say, Cindy?
Runoff.
Runoff of-
That's a good one, Rick.
Yeah.
Whenever possible would-
Cause you could have, I mean, you could have, somebody might have salt in barrels, that'd be easy to cover, you don't have to build a building so you have little salt barrels in it. But by the same time, you don't want a big dump truck of salt sitting somewhere that's coming into the great body.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. Any other questions on thirty-nine? No, we'll go to forty.
I want at the top of forty.
Yes, David?
Um, the snow storage removal is the Kent Smith Memorial one, and it's a very good one. But most sites, I don't think, can handle it, so should we be also putting in or removed from the site? We don't want to know where it goes, perhaps, but it's a very good point.
Well, isn't this- Isn't this saying, it's saying that if you have a snow storage area, it's gotta be located a certain way, it doesn't say you have to have a snow storage area.
But the rate we're doing it, we're looking for snow storage areas on almost every site plan we do.
Well, do we have a note that says all, all snow will be removed off-site? That's also-
We, we generally put that on too, if-
If they can't meet it, so then-
Then we probably should allow for it in our regulation, huh?
Right, I mean, you're gonna block yourself into a corner?
Yeah.
So, so add the option to take it off-site?
Yeah, to an adjacent municipality.
A global warming-
Ms. Hayden?
I, I thought I understood this one before, but now I don't. It says, "Snow storage has to be located so that it can't melt and runoff to receiving waters," and then the next sentence says, "Runoff from the melting snow shall enter treatment areas as specified."
No, there's no direct discharges to receiving waters.
Oh, no direct, okay, that's the word.
And then it has to go through a treatment process before it goes there.
Gotcha. Do we need to define treatment process? Cause I feel like we look at site plants all the time where it's like shoved over, and you know it's melting and going where it shouldn't be, but they, you know, give you this little six-foot or twenty-foot thing, and say, "That's gonna be, that's gonna..."
For this huge parking lot, we can get it all in there.
So you're saying, so maybe, define what comes out of the treatment area, have a standard for that?
Define what would the treatment area be?
I don't have the solution, but I'm kinda looking at John, cause I feel like he has some experience.
Snow, snow's, snow's a funny thing, you can't, you can't design for it. You, you tell me the winter and I'll design for it, but, you know, my opinion is, if the snow overflows and doesn't quite go, I'd rather deal with the other three hundred and sixty-three days a year than deal with, I know you always have the, you know, you get a hundred-year storm, what happens? At that point, you, you get zero treatment, that's the reality. So, let's deal-
Which leads me to my next question.
Still, yeah, and I've got a couple comments in here too, but-
So I don't know what the solution is, but I think you're right, there, there is no easy solution.
Right.
We live in New England, and it snows, and it goes in big piles.
So, yeah, I mean, I-
I think we ought to encourage the removal where you have a site that's bad. And we'll, we'll know those when we hit them.
And typically, they'll salt and sand after they've plowed, so hopefully, the bulk of the snow's up clean, and then they put it, and at that point, hopefully, it's going where it's supposed to, so. So, Mr. Coker?
The, uh, on page forty J, "The biological and chemical properties of the receiving water shall not be degraded by the stormwater runoff from the development site." In the recent gas station proposed, it rained more than, what was it, an inch and a half? The bypass opened up and it went straight into Hodgson Brook. That, that would preclude-
Not-
Having any runoff.
Not necessarily, cause I think what they were saying was, after the first inch and a half is treated, it isn't as significant for the next inch and a half, that's-
This says, "Shall not be degraded." The, the water running out of that, that after the inch and a half, or whatever it was, is certainly better than the first inch and a half, but it's still full of pollutants, or has pollutants in it, and therefore violates this section. So this would pretty much require us to, to either come up with a foolproof stormwater runoff, which does not believe-
Doesn't exist.
So, I, I, I don't, I, like Cindy, I don't have the answer, but it's just, that's the question.
Well, J is dangerous, J is problematic, because it might be implementing something that can't be, can't happen.
So maybe we need to reword it, just to, to say, wherever possible, I mean, not say it that way, but, you know, not say shall be, but the measures are gonna be implemented.
Well, I sort of like shall be, but-
I guess, I, I'll give you, I'll give you an easy answer to that, if, if, if you want. The half-inch, every storm you get a half-inch rain, which happens ninety-three percent of the time, those are the ones you want to contain a hundred percent, period. Anything after that, it, it's, it's minimal, but that was one of my comments in here, was do we want to put that, you know? And I know we're not in the design business, but if you detain the half-inch storm event a hundred percent, you'll, you'll contain all the pollutants, period.
All.
All. For that storm. It's the little ones that hit, that you got oil and it all goes in, well, if you can contain that on a, on a fifty-year storm event, you're not getting any treatment, it's just volume. So that may be a suggestion that, I don't know if we wanna, are, are you taking away from an engineer now to say, "Whoa, whoa, wait a minute," in this instance, I don't, but the half-inch storm is what you want to hit, so I don't know how we-
If you specify that, and then you give yourself a waiver, a waiver opportunity, then you-
Yep, absolutely. I mean, that to me is, is, there's nothing better you can do than that. I, I, I think it is.
Not gonna have last incremental clean, but you wanna get as much-
You want to hit that first flush, that half-inch bump.
Why not an inch, just, just for the sake of discussion?
Because at some point, you get so much water that you can't get, you know, that, that now you're making such a big area just to hold it, you don't want to do that. Just that first half-inch, that's what you want to do.
So the, the gas station you were talking about was a ha- what, inch and a half, or was it?
I, I don't remember the specific amount.
I think it was about an inch and a half.
Different kind of treatment though, I can't remember, it wasn't no treatment, it was the gravel.
Yeah, it's, it's volume, anything over an inch, it's volume, you're trying to maintain volumes, so.
So I guess my question is, do you want to leave it as is, or, as you suggest?
I, I would put for, for the half-inch storm event, blah, blah, blah. And, and again, if they want a waiver, go for it, but that's really what-
And again, for unintended consequences, is half an inch, you're, you're the construction guy. Yeah, is, is, should it not be an inch, or is half inch the standard?
Typically, half an inch happens ninety-three percent of the time, that's what you, all the designs I, when I used to do it, you know, in a previous slide, it was always a half-inch storm event, you wanted to ca- they call it the first flush, that's what it is.
So is the exact language you would recommend in J, to leave J as it is, but just say, "For the first half-inch of rainfall,"
For the half-inch storm event.
Storm event?
Yes.
Half-inch storm.
Half-inch storm event, yeah. Yeah. If you get a storm event of three inches, forget it, it's gonna do what it's gonna do, but that half-inch, if it happens ninety percent of the time, you're, the other ten percent, I know you care about it, but we're taking care of ninety percent. That's pretty good, so.
Well, it's also the theory that first flush gets most of the damage.
Right, and if you're doing six inches, it's just, everything's clean and it's, so. I don't know if that takes care of your unintended consequence.
We'll find out one of these days.
And the other thing I had on, on J, on, um, G, I, I really think that we ought to do two-ten and a hundred. We don't need twenty-five, we don't need fifty.
Okay, this was, um, a lengthy discussion with the DPW on that one. So I don't, I mean, that's fine, I mean, I'm diverted as far as how we resolve that.
Cause I think DPW will look at this again and come back at it.
I'd, I'd like them to tell me why, I want to hear why.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do that, yep.
Because as, as we've seen, it's, it's, you know, you get, you get an, a two inches of rain, everything's saturated, then you come and you get a fifty-year storm event, and it just, as we've seen in the last three or four, five years around here, it's not, it's not pretty.
So you would prefer, it said two-ten and a hundred?
Yep. The twenty-five and the fifty, to me, are insignificant as far as designs go. You want to hit the low end, the two-year, and I think you want to hit, you know, the hundred year is just volume, but, especially around the season.
That's the one we're getting every three years.
Well, it's, it's interesting that, that the hundred-year storm event, I think we've had five in the last twelve years.
Yeah, but they're every hundred years, so don't worry about it.
Well, I, I think they're redefining what a hundred-year storm. I think they are.
Ms. Roberts?
Yeah, I was wondering on L on page forty, um, what we meant by upgrade?
Increase?
Increase, probably, yeah.
Increase or P?
Good question. That was a test word.
That is a good question.
We don't want anything in this city upgraded.
How about degrade? I bet you were supposed to say degrade.
Degraded would make sense.
Have a degrade?
Degraded.
Like that's what you meant.
Yes.
So any other questions on forty? Oh, okay. Forty-one? Mr. Coker?
Uh, forty-one, uh, O, "Disturbed areas remaining idle for more than thirty days shall be stabilized," uh, two questions. Remaining idle, does that mean there's no construction going on, they're just, just like, it's just dirt? Why thirty days? A lot can happen in thirty days. I mean, a couple of good rainstorms, um, you know, I, I, and I'm not, again, I don't have the solution, I'm just bringing up the question.
But typically, there, if, if, if it's open, there's probably erosion control around it. That, you know, they may just be using it, not this week, but next. That's, that's usually a standard, is thirty days.
Okay, and stabilized means plant, print, plant, grass?
You can hydroseed it, you can put wood chips on it, you can-
We can just say with erosion control techniques.
Okay, is thirty days acceptable?
That's, that's usually a standard that, that I've seen.
We have the ability to be more strict if we wish, I mean, I'm, I'm turning to you as a construction expert.
I think if you got a site open and, and you're using, I think thirty days to me is, and you, don't forget, you got erosion control out there. I, I think thirty days is, is good.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Yeah, but it does say, the fir- N does require the erosion control first, O is what happens after you put that in.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Questions on forty-one? Forty-two?
Uh, seven point three-one A, "Construction or reconstruction of a street or parking lot? What happens if they just want to resurface it?"
So, yeah, we need to either define reconstruction or add surface.
Add resurface.
Yeah, well, why, why would you need one for resurfacing?
Yeah, do you need, yeah, if you, if you're not changing any aspect of the, of the law except for-
Does that mean if they re-grind it? And then resurface it with the material, have they done it?
Right, reconstruction?
I don't know.
Do you want to put construction, reconstruction, or reclamation of a? I know that's, the big buzz thing now is reclaiming, where they chew it up? And then they lay it back down?
I'm actually just asking a question, cause people will come in to try to do a simple job, and it becomes a big job. We say reconstruction, does that imply then that they're just redoing the surface, or not?
Well, this only kicks in when they're subdividing or developing, and one, A, B, or C, so only A, B, or C, not more than one of those things has to be true, right?
Well, if you're subdividing, none of these would come up technically.
Of land being developed, so if I own a vacant lot that has pavement on it, and I'm gonna build a fresh structure, and then I'm just gonna repave the lot, I would have already had to have gone through stormwater, wouldn't I, cause I'm building a structure?
Not necessarily, cause we'll get a, uh, an application in, for example, to resurface an existing parking lot.
And I guess that's the question, do we want a stormwater management plan if you're just repaving?
Hey, you're the board.
I don't think you do.
Okay.
The pavements are-
But what about, are you asking about change in material?
Doesn't say it.
What if it's going from pavement to gravel, or brick, or whatever, does that matter?
Doesn't that give you an opportunity for something that might not have-
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Fallen under, um, earlier best practices? I mean, isn't that, doesn't the resurfacing give you the opportunity for something that might be-
Devil's in the gray, not in the black or white.
Such, such as what?
Oh, I don't know, I mean, something that just hasn't been repaved for a long, long time, I don't know.
Or it's falling apart?
And it's falling apart, and they're just gonna resurface it, and there was no, um, it's earlier treatment. And it needed something.
But I wouldn't think that repaving would kick you into that situation, would it?
Well, that's right. Let's say it's really cracked, and some stormwater's infiltrating, and that's good, and then they repave it. And, and, and now it all runs off into a brick, that's bad. I mean, I think it's tough to grab on to what you want on this one.
Ms. Hayden?
And I guess I just ask the department, and Rick too, cause you see this, how often does this stuff come up, this type of?
Not really that often. When it does, it does, but, yeah, it's a big one, yeah, but, can you think of any?
As David was saying, Liberty Mutual did theirs over, I mean, I can think of a few that are tired now, and you, it wouldn't be surprising to redo it. Are we saying? Oh, I don't know what we're saying. I, I'd be very leery about mandating a, a lot of this for simple repaving.
Because it's maintenance, really.
Right, and then, and then erosion control now is gonna probably get below grade. Or, or off-site, I mean-
Right, right, and that's the thing, if they're just repaving, you're not re-grinding, you're not substructure put in.
Right.
So, what was a simple little repaving project is still a multi-million dollar project.
Oh, right.
And then they won't do it. Right.
In fact, a lot of times it may help if, if you can now get the water where it's supposed to go, the paving may help. So, Mr. Coker?
Well, I remember the Kmart, uh, they were going to do something at Kmart, and, and the Kmart was, um, right now, everything that runs off goes straight into the wetland, what used to be a wetland, it's now basically a toxic waste dump. But, but I, wouldn't it make sense that if they're going to repave something like that, that wouldn't that kick in our, our conditional use permit because of the wetlands and, and all of that? Wouldn't that, isn't that sort of the intent?
Oh, it's already disturbed, it's already being used as a parking lot. I'm not being argumentative, but this is that, this is that beautiful area of gray.
I, I would say if they're gonna reclaim or, or, or dig up part of the pavement, yes, but if they're just repaving it-
Other words, just go in, grind it, lay it down?
I'm saying just pave over what's there.
Okay.
Top it, repave it, I don't think there's-
You guys, size an issue?
Size, you mean the size of the parking lot?
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I don't, I hadn't even thought about this, but it seems to me that the, the issues that come up have to do with larger surfaces.
Well, if I was reconstructing mine, and I put three inches of asphalt on it, I could really change some drainage, but if I'm going through and just putting a skim coat on it, that's reasonably simple.
This might be a really stupid question, but if, they have to get triggered into the site review process first, before they, we even get to section seven point three. So if something hasn't triggered them needing going to site review, if we were to add paving here, it would mean that if you repave, you gotta go to site review, wouldn't it?
No, I think this means if you're already at site review, this is supposed to mean if you're already at site review, then you have to, then you have to submit a stormwater management plan. It's not a trigger for the actual application.
Yeah, I was, I was just-
I, I feel like I just found the breadcrumbs.
Well done, Cindy.
We're saved.
Because it wasn't a stupid question.
It's to ask for additional information.
I was just making, I was just noting that we probably should take out the words to the planning board for any tract of land being developed or subdivided, because it really means-
That's how we got law.
That's it, yeah.
And we could say, well, if we want, if we need to clarify, where our site plan is already required.
Well, it's, but it's not gonna get, it's, it's, you have to be here.
That's when you get here, you're, so.
Hey, we're back on the yellow brick road.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, now that clears that all up.
So do we need to, to redefine what we can, or we need to better define what reconstruction means? Do you want a stormwater management plan for resurfacing?
I don't think we do, no.
So we will exclude resurfacing from that, okay?
Now, do, do we assume that reconstruction would be reclaiming? I'm assuming, right, that would be considered reconstruction, alright.
And if they were putting in a whole new drainage system, we'd get it in here.
Right, that'd be construction, yeah, so I think we're covered.
So as long as we define it better?
Yep.
Okay. And we'll remove critical areas, I don't know what that-
Any other questions on forty-two? Forty-three? Forty-four? Impervious area surfaces on seven point seven, Council Dwyer?
Um, just at the bottom of forty-three, is the twenty percent just like the industry standard of impervious, or how do we, is, is that a, where's the twenty? Just a typical threshold, or a-
I think, yeah.
Scientifically proven.
I think it probably was typical of the state.
It's probably a state, since it is in a wellhead protection area defined by the, yes, we can check, we can check that percentage.
Yeah, but I think it's probably a state-defined standard.
I don't think so.
In that section.
Any question?
I'm on forty-four.
On forty-four, Ms. Gefford?
Um, yes. I'm wondering on the impervis- impervious surfaces, purpose section, whether, or somewhere, whether, oh no, seven-seven oh-two-one. Do you want to encourage, um, somewhere in here, roofing, this gets back to the sustainability thing, environmental, I call it environmental roofing, permeable pavers, et cetera, I mean-
We have roof area listed.
We do.
No, you're, you're suggesting that we, if we had green roofs, that would be a good thing as opposed to regular roofs?
Right, it was encourage, it was, it, remember when we were doing the site review criteria- Right, it was encourage, it was, it, remember when we were doing the site review criteria, and it's like you've got the negative and you've got the positive, but you want to create a encouragement for better or best practices, and it may be that checklist that you do does that, so this is not necessary here.
It, it also is, it's making sure that that word impervious there modifies everything that goes after it, I think is also... You know, so it's not just impervious parking lots, but it's-
So it's like a total area of any of the following that are impervious, da-da-da-da?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. Any other questions on the impervious? Forty-five?
Uh, we're a kinder, gentler city rather than demand about require.
Importune.
Pretty please?
Nicely done, David. Article eight utility standards on page forty-six.
Rick? Eight point one, item four, kind of going along with the, trying to pick up the generators or HVAC condenser equipment, just to make it specific, we're interested in those.
HVAC and montero.
HVAC and-
Add, and, and indoor generators.
I think I missed a couple words you said, I was waiting for the rest of it.
I probably mumbled.
Rick, would it be, if you just said all electrical and mechanical devices, would that be?
Could simplify it, I, yeah.
Because I, look, somebody may say, what, what, what's a transformer, what's equipment switching boxes?
Yeah, all electrical, mechanical, including but not limited to these sorts of things, so they get the idea.
Yeah, I think we should.
That's a good idea.
In that way, there at least people know electrical and they know mechanical.
Or to also capture stuff that isn't.
Correct.
Right.
Any other questions on forty-six or comments? Forty-seven? Sanitary sewer, sewage system, onsite sewage, and design.
Yeah, I've got one, uh, we don't have a lot of experience on onsite sewage disposal or septic systems. But we do have a requirement where we can look at them if we so choose, and I don't, not so sure that we've kept that in there, perhaps we could use that flexibility.
Um, which number are you referring to?
I think it's eight point three point zero two.
That is the code they have to meet.
Hmm.
So, so we, well-
I'm not so sure this is, uh, do you know if this is an accurate title? Because I believe there's verbiage in there, subsurface-
Should be accurate, but, um, we can double-check it.
I thought they changed that recently, but I could be-
Oh, really, not subsurface?
I took it, probably took it right from the webpage, but-
Oh, okay, then I, I might-
It's a subsurface division.
I thought it was.
Department of Environmental Services, subsurface division. But DES is still the umbrella that houses.
Yep.
Okay, let me check and make sure that's an accurate reference.
Well, what we've done on occasions where we've had a problem, we've had an, not an independent review of the state, but we've had the ability to have the city review it, to see if they were comfortable with some particular aspects of it.
So, so you'd like to have like another paragraph in here that specifically refers to allowing for an independent review?
Allowing, allowing the city to review it if they so choose.
Mr. Coker, did you have a question?
Forty-seven, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, two questions. Uh, forty-seven, three, which would be eight point two, point three. Where public water supply is not available as determined by the planning board and the water superintendent or not required, the applicant may provide an onsite water supply system. Implied in that means that there actually could be buildings where there is no water. Is that the intent?
Good one. I didn't read it that way, but I think it does read that way.
It only is the application.
The applicant may provide, but on, on the other hand, he may not provide, so-
Well, didn't you have one a couple meetings ago? Where there was no, that, um, thing that was out on Gosling Road, wasn't that such a building? It had no toilet facilities, it was like a storage thing with-
Right.
I mean, we're through these things.
Correct, that was a public service state that-
It had no water.
Eight point one one is the general provision that would say that if the anticipated use requires a thing you're going to have in the utility service. So, I, I mean, I, I don't think I would, it's an interesting point that you raised, but I think there's enough in there to catch the person who's choosing not to have water on his property.
It's okay, again, I don't have the solution, but, but I read that to say, yeah, you know, you may have water, you may not. And then follow-up for any onsite, and four, for any onsite system supplying twenty thousand gallons per day or more, where did that number come from?
It's in your existing regulations, so I have to say, I do not know.
I think the three and four should be, it would be less confusing if three and four combined as one item, because basically it's saying, you can do it, but you have to have it checked, you know? It's, it's, in the unlikely situation that you're going to provide something onsite, here's what happens.
This is only for twenty thousand or more.
I understand that.
Okay.
I mean, I guess it's, it's almost, you could do it either way, I suppose, but it just, it just seems like, those are the only two that really talk about onsite.
I believe it's a separate, I believe it's a separate point. I mean, to me, three, Don, says where public water supply is not available or not required, you know, you don't have to have it in-
Yeah, I was thinking it was sort of left up to the, in that, I mean, maybe we need to word it better, but it was sort of leaving it up then to the approval of the planning board, whether or not to require that they need to provide an onsite water supply.
Right, and it's very interesting that we just recently had the one that-
Because why make them do that?
Didn't need water at that building.
And it could limit-
The only reason it was before us was for that building.
It could be a way to limit future redevelopment of that, if you're concerned about that, not providing onsite water right away limits the likelihood of that being redeveloped into some-
I guess what this raises to me is, does this imply that if public water supply is available, you may not provide onsite water? I, I guess that's what-
That's correct.
So should we say that, or do we say that?
Rick, Rick had a-
Well, I, I just, was a comment that there wouldn't be many types of facilities I can think of that aren't going to need water. Simply for sanitation reasons.
And for fire.
I mean, if the building is intended for occupancy, it's going to be the requirement to provide sanitation, so I, I don't know, I'm, I don't know where we're going or where-
Warehouse?
Our ordinance?
Oh, yeah.
Here's what I would do, check with Dave Allen. I would, I would have Dave Allen review the-
This whole section, yeah.
Rick, if I had a generator building, an enclosed generator?
No, that wouldn't.
But that, but that's, we're just saying, we're just talking water supply, not necessarily buildings, correct?
Well-
It's something that triggers site review.
Right.
Right.
You know, you could have an antenna that triggers site review, built in the site or something, and it obviously wouldn't need water.
Right.
Guess pressure you would do some-
And again, if, if water's required, it'll be a, a billing permit issue, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a typo, or?
Do we actually change the fifty thousand?
Yeah, that's, that's interesting, may, I think the may thing is what kind of... Yes, Rick?
Um, just a, perhaps a typo in eight point three point zero one. I think it reads better, the word main and line probably should be plural, sewer mains and lines.
Maines and lines, or mains or lines?
Or lines.
A project, into which, A project?
Yes, we'll add that.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions on forty-seven? Forty-eight?
Restress. Have you talked to Peter Rice for eight three, eight point three point zero four? For, for, you have?
Yes, this is, this is, came out of a meeting with the D W, yes.
And really, the decision was the cleanest thing to do is just reference the new sewer use ordinance.
Yeah, we had more in there, I think, at one point.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions on forty-eight?
And does, does that... Does, does that sewer ordinance include the plan review aspect of having if a building is likely to have a restaurant included?
Right, that's what I was wondering.
Does it have that in there specifically?
We couldn't have a restaurant go in without?
No, no, I don't mean that, I mean, as has come before us a couple times, the, even if they were proposing a restaurant right now, if it was a likely restaurant, we had that argument with the developer.
I think the bases are quite covered now in the new sewer use ordinance, because we've been burnt before, so I think it anticipates all eventualities. But, you know, we can take a look at that, we can pull that out, and it actually would be good for the board, I think, to be familiar with that ordinance.
We had a couple issues on State Street, didn't we?
Yes.
Quite recently, and we had one on-
Yeah.
Congress.
Congress as well. So. Any other questions on forty-eight? Forty-nine, onsite waste storage and disposal standards?
Nine point two two. Uh, shall, all solid waste containers shall be of sound construction. And tanks designed for the particulars, I guess that's specific enough, but, or does it need to be more specific? Are there standards for these, or is it really just that generic?
I guess that was our performance standard, that they would, they would be resistant to insect and animal entry, if you want, we can, you know, if they think it's an issue, we can add more, but that was sort of the way to gauge.
This is out of, out of my area.
Ms. Roberts?
Uh, yes, I was wondering about encouraging composting. Um, whether we should put language in there about that, um...
Yeah.
I know that came up in some of the sustainability discussions.
And recycling language.
Okay.
Right.
We do, I think we do talk about recycling, yeah.
So, right, under eight.
Yeah, so let's see, on, on nine point two two that David was just talking about, does it make sense to just delete of sound construction? All solid waste storage containers shall be resistant to insect or animal entry? Because I don't know what sound construct, I don't know how you, how sound construction, but- Sound construction, yeah.
Those are the guys there.
Yeah. Mr. Coker, thanks for that.
Typo in nine point two point three, uh, they shall be equipped with tight fighting covers. I think that's fitting. Oh, boy, have fought with tight covers before.
Good, catch.
And two, and two number threes.
Yes.
Yes, we saw that, thank you. I like that.
Yeah, that could be your legacy, Don, is tight fighting covers. Ken had the, there's no storage in bike racks, tight fighting covers.
Not mushy.
Squishy, squishy.
David?
On nine point two five, uh, am I reading the last part of that sentence right? From any property line or yard inlet for stormwater collection?
Maybe, hold on.
Probably or, you have an or between yard and inlet.
Yes, I think that's what it is, thank you.
Inlet for storm, stormwater collection.
Yeah.
Read that one again, maybe?
No, I think what, I think it, it's referring to, um, it probably should just say inlet for stormwater collection and property, property and yard.
You should just take out the word, take out the word yard.
Or do you want to just get rid of yard inlet for, and just put or stormwater collection system?
Inlet, I think is probably a, is keep that, keep inlet there, I think.
Twenty feet from any inlet for stormwater collection.
Because if you just say collection system, what's that, that's kind of this diffuse thing?
So, so the inlet's here, and then the, the stormwater runs closer to twenty feet, that, that's okay?
Well, that's where the waste container pad-
So, okay, so is that, good.
But, you know, there are also, I think this is trying to do two things, and one, maybe we need to separate them. I think it also is saying that they shouldn't be twenty feet from, they should be at least twenty feet from a property line, so you're not having your garbage and storage containers abutting, your neighbors. So we, we might actually need to divide this into two components, because it's trying to deal with two different objectives, so.
Or is that the right connection?
Mr. Coker, and then Ms. Hayden?
Um, I would like to see something in here about the hours of pickup shall conform with city noise ordinances or, you know, whatever the proper wording would be.
This is, can you do that, operational stuff in site plan review, I'm sure, Ms., would you, would you impose that as a site plan review condition, the hours of operation? Do you do that?
Well, if we could put hours of, uh, construction work on there.
That happens during the construction.
Right.
This is after the thing's all done.
Why am I putting that in here, Don, is then if it changes, you know, it's a, it's a separate regulation?
I think he was just going to say in compliance with the city's blank, so it's non-specific, but it refers to-
Or, or even if, if located within X number of feet of residence, or residential zone or something, and again, I'm, I'm just sort of throwing ideas out. You have no idea how loud those trucks are, you know, they are just ferocious. And, uh, so I think it, if we can do it in the site-
Get the Parade Mall to restrict it, they've submitted us a letter showing they'd be in conformance.
I don't know, I don't know the best way to handle that.
I, nor do I, but-
Why don't we have, like we did with the hours of construction, add a note to the plan that'll conform to city regulations as to that? When we review it at legal, if it doesn't fly, we'll come back and take it out.
Do we want to just do a blanket, that, that-
Yeah.
All items shall conform to all city ordinances and standards, period?
We say that every, everywhere, but Don's got a good point, and at the Parade Mall, we went to great lengths to get a letter from them saying they would adhere to certain times, and we haven't.
We create more paperwork than we need to? I mean, the ordinance already says when you can and cannot.
It's just another layer of-
Yeah, I think as long as, you know, people are aware of the noise that these things generate, that's going to be one of the questions that we ask as a board. So, may, maybe we don't need it.
I don't, I don't know where we put it.
It's going to come up in the next, in the next section, which is outdoor lighting, I mean, you could probably say the same thing about sign, you know, sign lighting and that kind of stuff in terms of hours of operation, so we, it might be the, if you want to do it, I think it'd be better to do it, most have a list of all the things that you can imagine that could be nuisances, and have them all referred to differently.
We could spend days on that.
But, but, but lighting is almost a different animal in that certain applicat, Lonza, for instance, needs lighting twenty-four hours a day. Maybe Demulis doesn't, I don't know how you regulate lighting on a site.
This doesn't specify hours of operation for lighting.
I know, I know it doesn't, what I'm saying is that this doesn't specify hours of operation either, and so-
Right, that's, it's done in the zoning ordinance, the lighting part is done in the zoning ordinance, so maybe this is something, do you want to address it?
Mrs. Coker?
Uh, storage containers, nine point two, somewhere one through whatever the number is, six, seven, eight, um, wow, I had it. All solid waste pickup shall conform to the hours of something like that, that, that would be, why can't that be in there?
How's that site view?
Because isn't that already, isn't that already instituted somewhere in the city ordinance?
Okay. You're right.
I, I agree, it's, it's a valid point, I'm just wondering if we're not-
Yeah, I think-
You're taking on, it's not, it's a, it's a non-zoning, non-land use thing, it's not, it's, it does, it's another ordinance.
Almost a compliance issue. Or an enforcement issue, Ms. Hayden?
Do you guys know where the twenty feet came from in item five, the, the distance from the property? The reason I ask this, say you have a Burger King next to McDonald's, do we really care if their dumpsters are like right against the-
Right, perhaps it needs to be specified by use?
Because it's residential that we're concerned about, right?
Yeah.
And I don't know, did that come from some-
Well, residential or, I mean, perhaps if you have an office building.
Or a park, a public park.
Or a park, where people are going to be outside, yeah.
That's not in our current ordinance, I don't-
No, no, this is new.
Came out of some model, I just, I think we ought to think about that, because there's sites that-
Perhaps by land use, yeah.
Right, I mean, there's sites that are really constrained.
Right, that's what I was saying.
And, and so, I'm just trying to picture, twenty feet is a fair amount in a lot of ways for some of our small-
Right, it is.
But could that be handled by waiver?
Yeah, we don't want to waive everything, I, I don't know, that's why I just asked for a camera, I don't have a solution, but I just thought we might want to-
Perhaps we need to investigate different, a range, more of a range, yep.
That's all I'm saying.
Cindy, I have one word for you, Riverwalk. I mean, it's like, oh, it's-
Chris, I was thinking it, but I wasn't going to say it.
That's interesting. We're all set on forty-nine? Page fifty? Council Dwyer?
Well, this whole, um, sustainability thing, and how, uh, the language can be friendlier toward recycling, and in thinking about, even if one would not be, even if one had private pickup and therefore was not required to recycle under current ordinances, in a site review, wouldn't we want to make sure that there was space for, um, recycling materials and recycling pickup? And I don't know if that comes from storage containers or whatever, so that we were not precluding it by, um, not allowing space for it, or, or how we do that to kind of get that value in, in here. So, I don't know where it goes, but I think, I think we need to do that.
And, and is how do we encourage recycling or setting aside space to recycle in a street?
Setting aside so that we don't discourage it by just admission.
Could we say something like that?
A statement in 9.1?
We could say that. We could say anywhere that there is a trash collection, that there should be, they shall provide recycling or-
Right, sufficient space for-
Sufficient space.
Sufficient space for.
How about 9.2.1? Where you have your blank statement.
Yeah.
Do we want to require them to set aside sufficient space? What is sufficient space? I, you know, I'm not, I mean, that's a good principle, I'm just trying to think about how this would play through. Because I think probably five years from now, a lot more companies will be recycling than are now, but-
But do we want to require somebody to do something that's not required? If I get private, if I've got private pickup and I choose not to recycle, that's my choice, right now.
Why can't you just say, encourage them? We, the, it is encouraged, I don't know what the right terminology would be, but, but we encourage the applicant to set aside space for recycling. That puts it in their mind that, ooh.
Then you're not debating what sufficient is.
Right, because even, and I can give an example of our office, the amount of space that five large bins take up for paper recycling, this is just paper, and it's privately picked up, it's not city, it's private, but you still have to plan for it, whether even the, the city would require it or not. Where is that going to be? Well, it has, it stays inside, and then it has to go outside at some point in order to be picked up, so, oh.
Why don't we, why don't we consult with our, we will consult with our recycling coordinator about how to, how to incorporate it? Because I don't know how that, if they really, if it's inside, we don't care, because it's not in our site review.
Right, right, but you have to, but every Tuesday morning, it's got to be outside, or it's not getting picked up.
But is that a site review issue? Do we care?
Yeah.
No, but I think your point's, well, let's, let's consult. Page 50, any other comments or questions on 50?
Unless, unless I missed it, there's no, there's no reference to dark sky friendly unless it comes in under Article 8.
Uh, it's, yeah, this is, this is the dark sky lighting ordinance.
And somewhere it actually uses the word dark.
Say this is, what is?
There is a dark sky ordinance.
Article 8.
10.2E?
That's referred to here.
That would be-
This isn't the ordinance, this is, this is part of it.
Yeah, this part, no, I mean, there is a dark sky friendly ordinance, and that's what it is, so this is a dark sky.
Right, but there's no reference to it here, unless I missed it.
It's all, all that stuff in the zoning. Juliette, what does 10.2E refer to?
That's the standard used to, um, you mean, which, the IESNA?
Correct.
Yeah, that's the standard used for dark sky friendly.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
Why don't you just put a note, yeah, why don't you just put a notation there or something like, yeah.
Dark sky.
Because people know it that way, too.
That's what I meant, this is, this ordinance is a model based on dark sky friendly ordinances.
Correct.
So, look at 10.1, compliance with zoning ordinance, so you could just add on the end of the zoning ordinance, comma, or, or a period to the new sentence, dark sky friendly, however adjectives and verbs you want to use.
Um, 52, lamps?
Oh, yeah, um, a number of three there, I was wondering what we mean by temporary? Will we have a definition of temporary?
We'll have a definition, yes, absolutely, because that's important.
Mr. Coker?
Just an education, please, a color rendering index lower than 50. A, what is a color rendering index? And B, what is the measurement? 50 is-
I'm, I'm not a lighting expert, but there will be a definition for what the color, that's, the definitions are going to be a very important part of this section, so that'll certainly be provided.
Thank you.
Um, 53, fire protection standards?
I got a couple.
Yes, David?
On one and three on the first one, both of those end as necessary for a reasonably safe project. How about if we just delete that and have it end with the requirements of the fire department on both of those?
That's reasonably safe.
But not burned.
It's reasonably safe, don't worry about it.
We got Rick here, who's probably got better on it.
Well, I, I guess I'm looking at all of those items and wondering, how does that relate to site review? How does that relate to the site? How do smoke detectors, heat detectors relate to the site? How do firewalls and fire doors and exits relate to the site?
Right.
And how does the ability of the fire department equipment and personnel relate to the site?
That does under, uh, impacts, fire equipment and stuff, but the other ones, I think you might have a point.
But I mean, it's not the responsibility of the applicant of the site to, to hire more personnel and, and buy more trucks, it could be.
Pick your ladder.
Okay, that would, that would not be a, that would be a site, that would be a building.
An impact fee? Oh, I'm thinking, whoa, I'm-
I think you got something on the codes and everything, but actually, one of your measurements is impact on municipal services, and one of the services is the fire department.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the fire department does weigh in on every application, so.
I mean, where I've heard it come up is, is there enough space for them to get their ladder at the right angle on the building? Against the fence that's on the property line behind, things like that.
A site development issue, absolutely. Access, maneuverability?
Right.
Right, but, but they already are dealing with a particular piece of equipment that they're trying to determine whether will work on this site.
Did these, did Steve Griswold, I mean, I know he reviewed these.
Yes, he did, and, um, a lot of these are from the existing ordinance, and he did review them. Um, I don't think he necessarily thinks they all are necessary, but he didn't think any of them needed to be removed, so I got mixed.
So, if you were, if you were looking at a building, I mean, the, and we're looking at firewalls, fire doors, exits, and smoke and heat detectors, you have to deal, you have to deal with that totally inside from whether it requires site plan approval or not.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe it's just superfluous to the, that's what you're saying, it's-
I agree. That's just reference where it goes to.
Well, it's intact, too.
Pardon me?
Which would come up with site review.
Yeah.
It's a good one.
So-
These are like building code type.
So, is, is there anything in this, in this Section 11.1 that we should keep, or is it all superfluous?
Can we suggest this?
What, can we look, let me look.
How about if Rick Hopley talks to Steve Griswold about this and gets back to you guys? That'd be a good point.
I, I can see a lot of different things, and I haven't really read it yet, so.
Yeah, we, I did talk to Steve, but I think it might help if you talked to him and said, you know, are these really necessary? Because we could take out sections if they're not.
Do, also on 11.2.2, fire hydrants shall be served by minimum eight-inch main? Would that, would that be true for a smaller application?
I think the water, I think there is a minimum standard.
Okay.
I, I really do.
All right.
And I think that, it's been that way for me.
Okay.
Yep.
Just for the heck of it too, while we're on there, we go a couple of ways on referring to eight inches, eight in parentheses, or parentheses, inches spelled out, inches not spelled out.
Just be consistent?
Just to be whatever it ends up being.
So, on that whole article, Rick, you'll talk to Steve and look at that, okay, great.
Can I just ask a question? When you go to talk to Steve, are there any other, could you ask him specifically if there are any other site-type issues that need to be addressed? Because we really only talk about distance to water supply, fire lanes.
Right.
And storage of liquids, and there may be citing issues that he would have.
Are there any questions on 54 as well, while we're on the fire protection standards?
And, and when you talk to him, also talk about, sorry, um, shrubberies, whether those are issues from fire protection. I'm, I'm just thinking about what that means.
Oh, um, urban interface. Um, fifth, page 55, post-approval procedures and project completion. 56, maintenance and inspection, oh, Mr. Coker?
Um, Section 12.4, uh, says maintenance and inspection. There's no reference whatsoever in one, two, one or two, to maintenance. I would suggest, um, proper wording, I don't know, but stipulations at site plant, site review, um, for maintenance work as reported to DPW as we ask all of the time, uh, that should be in here, that'll give it a little more weight. Again, my, my complaint has always been that I would bet if we really took the time and went back through the minutes of all of the meetings that said, yes, we will do a, a six-month report to DPW, I, I would bet every dollar I could get my hands on that probably 25% of the applicants do it, and that may be generous. So, I would like to have something in here in the regulations that gives it a little bit more weight.
Okay. Ms. Hayden?
I'm just trying to figure out if that's what this section is about. Is this something you pulled out of ours, or is this something you added? And I, I mean, I, I agree with what you're saying, Don, but this section is, if you look at 12.4, item one, the second sentence says such inspections shall be performed by an oversight engineer hired at the applicant's expense. So, that to me means this section is more about, if we're really unhappy with somebody, we make them hate for us hiring somebody to do a full inspection. That's not the post is going out saying, yeah, that looks good, so, I don't know.
This is a new section.
Yeah, okay.
I'll tell you how I see that, Cindy, is that the applicant says, I will do the maintenance and I will send a report every six months to DPW. Somebody takes the time and finds out there hasn't been a report for three years. Guess who just hired a, a, an inspection engineer? The applicant, because he didn't, he, they did not keep their word in terms of doing the inspections and reporting.
I don't disagree, but I don't think that's the usual condition, that's, that's all I'm saying, that-
So perhaps it should be, it shouldn't be called maintenance and inspection, it should be something about enforcement.
Compliance and enforcement, I don't know.
We might want to think about that one more.
I think that, that section needs to be, because I, I had two lines for oversight, that, that was, so.
Well, and then, I, I agree, we, we should be studying this, and also keep in mind, over time, the property ownership may change, and so the new owner had nothing to do with the development of the lot, the lot. Now, I don't know how that blends in.
Well, he inherits it if he does it during the site review process.
But I, I think there's, there's, there's a, there's a common ground between this and nothing, I think there's something in the middle. Rather than just all of a sudden, bang, get an oversight engineer, whatever.
Also, on 12.2, we're really calling this now a construction management and mitigation plan.
Okay.
On 55?
Yeah.
Do you use it, do you change the acronym as well, then?
Yeah, true, it's CMMP now. I think it's simpler.
Although it's not central main power, huh?
I think we would get confused.
56, any questions? 57?
Accessway and driveway, oh, that's easy. Hi, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to come back to that stipulations for maintenance and the reporting and that. I, I'm not clear as to where we left that.
Uh, what, which page?
I'm sorry, on 56, under 12.4, maintenance and inspection.
I think that was going to be reviewed, Ms. Hayden.
Where it was left in my brain is that we would talk more about it, staff, and I understand your, because I think staff understands your concern about following maintenance reports, or-
Someday when I have nothing to do, I will go back through the minutes, make a list of all those people that said that, and then go ask the DPW to say who's been reporting. I think we would all be shocked, although not surprised.
Did you let me know the day before you do it?
What's that?
Could you let me know the day before you do it?
So you'll take a vacation day?
You'll cough up a blood, so.
So are there any other questions? So, I'd like to thank Rick and Juliette, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Yay!
So.
Just a quick one, just kind of wondering, um, the numbering nomenclature. Why do you add a leading zero after the second decimal and not all the way through? I'm just thinking of writing all these enforcement letters and having to type that extra zero.
Where is the extra zero?
Like 8.3.03.
I don't know.
8.4.01.
Good question.
Can we?
Rick maintains that this is an improvement.
I don't know.
All right, if it goes more than.
We, we have to refine some of the, um, formatting.
It's probably something the word processor just does it automatically.
No, it's not.
Are there any other questions that we have?
I just had a quick one, which is, on the plantings, did we, this is, I was a little late, so 31 on, do we encourage low energy, low water usage? Okay, thanks. And invas, non-invasive? I, I got that, thanks.
Ms. Hayden?
Just one last quick thing, I know you're going to add definitions, but we might as well define sustainability.
Oh, no. We'll use the Brunt-
Talk to our sustainability committee.
We'll use the Brunt Land Commission definition, which talks about social equity and- Any other questions or comments?
Some of us concerned.
Motion for adjournment?
Motion.
So move?
Anybody want to say go sucks?
Go sucks.
Thank you.